Welcome to the April 8, 2019 Meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Harris.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Hinkie.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Are there any corrections, additions to the meeting, executive meeting minutes of March 11, 2018? Hearing none. Councilman Hinkie moves to approve the minutes, second by Councilman Egan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Next item is hearing from citizens. I will make a motion that we change the agenda and move Eddie's Heroes before hearing from citizens, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
Randy, do you want to say something first? Randy?
One of the more popular innovations by our police department has been the addition of Eddie to our police force. He is very popular with everybody, but particularly with children and also seniors. And Eddie has been a great public relations tool for our city. And we thought we would use this opportunity, having the popularity of Eddie and reaching out to the public to show maybe a little different side of our personality as in law enforcement, is to recognize individuals in the community who have stepped out and gone above and beyond to help someone else in the community.
Yes, Mayor, I think this program's been very successful. Lori Mann is Eddie's mom or one of our officers, and she does a great job with Eddie. Eddie's very popular, and this is another example of how we can recognize people in the community that step up and do a good job and do the right thing, so.
Okay. Or do you want to say something?
Yeah, this is a great program that we started in the city and to recognize the younger people and the younger citizens of the city, and I think it's great. And I have one for my ward tonight, so it's great. Thank you.
Okay, the first one goes to Abby Mandrell. Abby has been involved Abby has been involved in the Be Like Jesus Day for the last two years by washing cars to collect money for charity and cleaning planes for the Army. She has donated half of her Christmas money to toys for the homeless and food for Team Food Pantry. Abby has taken part in many lunches for the Oasis Shelter and has been involved in making cards for shut-ins and nursing homes. Abby makes life better for people through gift of service. Okay, the second Eddie's Heroes Award goes to Allison Weidman. In school, Allison steps up without being asked. She helps other students by being a positive role model and having a positive attitude. Allison helps a child with several medical conditions that impact him physically. Allison helps him study and helps him with his belongings and any materials that he may need and constant encouragement. Allison has set up a lemonade stand and donated all the money to charity to assist with the field trip. Allison has volunteered to clean up the area around school. Allison has volunteered for an event to feed the homeless. Allison inspires parents and teachers at her school as well as inspiring those in her community. And the last Eddie's Heroes Award goes to Lily Scanlon. Lily has received an award through her school, and she constantly helps other students and teachers alike. Lily has volunteered with the Florissant VFW and has helped with events during the Belli of Flowers, Wednesday Night Out, 9/11 Ceremony, and the Veterans Day Ceremony. Lily has spent hours helping the organization Friends of Kids with Cancer by organizing their toy closet and making food deliveries to families whose loved ones are going through treatment. Lily has volunteered for the Christmas party for kids at City Hall. Lily is always willing to help no matter what you ask of her. Can all of our Eddie's Heroes come on back up for a picture?
Next item is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issues, not necessarily on the agenda for three minutes. This is not a question or answer, period. If you would like to speak to a council member or the mayor, please stay until after the meeting is over and we'll get with you. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, please wait, then you can speak during the public hearing. First one, Don Adams.
Good evening, my name is Don Adams, and I want to thank you all for letting me to come up here and address issues. The issue I want to talk about tonight is the adult daycare centers and shopping centers. I do not believe that this should be allowed. I think it's a safety hazard, first off. I think it's unsafe for the people that are there. I think it's unsafe for the people that drive in shopping centers. And I would like to see this bill go into the dead bill basket, I guess, so to speak. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Zach Schneider.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Mr. Hassel.
My name is Zach Schneider. I reside at 1420 East Tushane Drive. Many of you on the council know who I am. We've been acquaintances for some time. Some of you know that I'm a retired Navy Chief Petty Officer, spending 22 years in our Navy. Serving on three combatant ships, deployed five times to the Persian Gulf, one deployment to Bagram, Afghanistan, and Kandahar, Afghanistan, and ending with a three-year tour in Sicily with Task Force 67. This whole time, I was a resident of the city of Florissant, and I was always voting. I never missed an election. My first assignment was crew member aboard an aircraft carrier called USS John C. Stennis. This was the first aircraft carrier named after a United States Senator because of his decades of great support to our Navy. In fact, his nickname was the father of America's nuclear navy. I later visited Senator Stennis's home in the great state of Mississippi. He served 41 years, 41 consecutive years, in the United States Senate. I can only think of one other person who has served longer consecutive in office that happens to be Carl Vinson, another United States aircraft carrier namesake due to 50-plus years in Congress representing the state of Georgia. After 22 years in the Navy, I could have moved anywhere else, but I chose to come home to Florissant, Missouri. You know, we have one person in this room who comes close to these two men and has served 40 consecutive years in office representing our great city of Florissant, Missouri. With 32 years sitting on this council and eight of the last years as our mayor. Prior to that, he spent nine years serving in our Navy. Mayor Schneider, I'm proud to be your son, proud to call you my father, and I salute your service, sir. Thank you for your sacrifice and your service to our country and to the beautiful city of Florissant. It was a job well done. I love you, Dad.
Thank you, Zach. Very well said. Next item is communication. There are none. Next item is public hearing. Public hearing number 1904005. Is a petitioner present?
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 410-020 of the Florissant Code of Ordinances, a subdivision ordinance as amended that a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, the City of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55, Rue St. Francois, on Monday, April 8, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition. To approve a final subdivision flat of Lot 1 of Florissant General Baptist Church, re-subdivision for the property located at 360 Graham Road. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the City Clerk at least five days before said public hearing, calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
I'm Doris.
Good evening.
State your name and record, please. I'm Doris Carter. I'm Doris Carter. I'm the church clerk at Florissant General Baptist Church. We've been partners with Fresh Winds for seven years, and now it's time for them to buy the part of the property.
My name is Dr. Milton Mitchell, Sr. I am the founder and pastor of the Fresh Winds Christian Church, and behind me are just some of our members who are here in agreement with the purchase, and we are here to ask for the council to, again, approve the subdivision. Thank you.
If anybody has any questions, we're here.
Mr. Shuldoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I visited with Pastor Mitchell on Saturday and looked at the property, and he explained what he was going to propose to the council. Also spoke to Ms. Carter on Saturday, and these two have been neighbors for many, many years, and this is a simple subdivision of a lot which the pastor is going to use for parking spaces. And they've been very good neighbors and very good stewards to each other and to the city of Florissant. Both churches are very active in our community, and planning a zoning had very minimal questions, and the process was very quick. And if this was a bigger project, I would treat it a little bit different, but this is a simple subdivision of that piece of property from one church to another. And I wish you well, and I think it's great that you're working together and providing more spaces so folks can go to church and be active in our community. And like I said, both the churches are very active, and they're good stewards of our city. And I have my full support, Ms. Carter and Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldoff.
I just have to say something really quick. If anybody wants to blame anybody for me being up here, this is the woman that recruited me almost 20 years ago in Ferguson.
She did a good job.
Thank you, guys. I love you.
You did a good job.
She was an easy one to train.
Mr. Shuldoff.
With this coming to light, I think I might be changing my opinion.
Oops, I should have waited until I voted, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Shuldoff. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment or speak on this public hearing? Seeing no further, Councilman Shuldoff moves to close the public hearing, second by Councilwoman Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carried. Public hearing is closed. Next item is old business, bills for a second reading. Bill number 9474. Councilman Syam moves for a second reading, second by Councilman Parson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance authorizing special use permit for an adult daycare center for the property located at 119 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Councilman Syam moves for a third reading, second by Councilman Egan. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit for an adult daycare center for the property located at 119 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hold on.
Hello, everyone. I was coming to present the new updated, so the updated business plans to the council. Living Essentials Adult Day Center Following Business Plans Updates. Living Essentials Adult Day Center Participants Cannot Drive Due to Their Physical Disabilities. Therefore, we provide
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record, please?
Kenesha Elijah.
Thank you.
Okay. Living Essentials Adult Center Following Business Plan Updates. Living Essentials Adult Day Center Participants Cannot Drive Due to Their Physical Disabilities. Therefore, we provide transportation. At the last meeting on March 25, 2019, the council stated their concerns about the shopping center not being a safe location because there's a fire lane at the entrance of the building. Living Essentials has taken the time to implement an arrival and dismissal plan to ensure the safety of our participants. Living Essentials will assign additional support staff during arrival and dismissal times. We will be, it will be company policy when loading and unloading that every participant is escorted by a staff member. The landlord of Flower Valley Shopping Center is also willing to make the following but not limited, safety improvements to the front and rear of the building. Installing a ramp at the entrance of the building, installing a crosswalk in the front of the building, installing additional stop signs in the front and rear of the building, designated handicap parking spaces in the front and rear of the building, any additional improvements in the front and rear of the building requested by the city of Florissant. With the following safety improvements implemented above, Living Essentials Adult Day Center is asking for your approval of 119 Flower Valley Shopping Center Special Use Permit. Best regards. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name, please, for the record.
Don Adams. Again, I get kind of confused on this stuff, so I'm not sure how you guys are voting, but I just want to strongly object to this. I mean, you know, years ago, we didn't have this kind of stuff, and people were more courteous the way they drove, the way they acted. Nowadays, I don't care if you put 50 stop signs and 50 red lights in a parking lot, people ignore them. They fly by them. And to authorize something like this is just not safe for the people going there. It's not safe for the community of Florissant, and it's not going to make the community of Florissant look any better to have storefront daycare centers. I'm sorry, this needs to be voted down. I mean, there's just no logical reason to have this kind of thing in a shopping center. Again, and I hope I'm not reiterating myself, but it's just, I just am very upset about this whole issue of coming up, and I apologize for that. So thank you all very much.
Clerk, please poll the council.
Harris.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Egan.
No.
Caputa.
No.
Shuldoff.
No.
Hinkie.
No.
Pagano.
No.
Parson.
No.
Bill number 9474 fails. Bill number 9480. Councilwoman Shuldoff moves for a second reading, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to Code Section 126065, wage increase and schedule, Section A, job classification and grade level by adding a new position of property maintenance and housing inspector.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Hinkie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to Code Section 126065, wage increase and schedule, Section A, job classification and grade level by adding a new position of property maintenance and housing inspector.
For the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Harris.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Hinkie.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Syam.
Yes.
Bill number 9480 passes and becomes Ordinance 8500. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Trying to remember who the first person is that I, was that I appointed to a committee back in 1979. But tonight will be my last appointment. I have an individual that I'd like to appoint to two different committees. First of all, I'd like to appoint Navy retired chief Zach Schneider to the Veterans Commission.
Second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
And Ms. Pagano and I would like to nominate Zach Schneider to the Traffic Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
I'll take care of it. I got it.
Congratulations, Zach. Next item is resolutions. Resolution number 1010.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council recognizing and thanking Thomas P. Schneider for his eight years of service as mayor of the city of Florissant and his many contributions to North County.
I'll move for a second reading, second by Mr. Shuldoff. Is there any discussion? Ms. Pagano.
Yes, well, I know that I can't beat you on this one, Zach, because that was very nice for your dad. But Tom, I believe up here on the council that I've known you probably the longest. You were a city engineer when my dad left this council and went to the county, and then you also served with my brother on the council. So, one, I would like to thank you for encouraging me and supporting me when I decided to run for the city council, although at times, I'm sure you said to yourself, as I said to myself, what was I thinking? But over the years, you and I have had our shares of ups and downs, agree to disagree moments, and unforgettable screaming matches. But it's all been for the betterment of the city, and our common goal was always to make this city the best it could be. With that being said, we have also shared many good times and laughs during meetings, conventions, dinners, golf outings, and campaigns. I can honestly say that you know how to run a campaign like no other. We have had many great propositions passed for this city when we all worked together. You have also taught me more history about our country and our city than I have ever learned in school. And you've also attempted to teach me how to improve my golf game, which proved true after I outdrove you in a tournament, and I believe I did that twice.
More than that.
Yeah. You have also learned that I really don't have a rash on my neck, but it was me trying to tell you that the mayor announcement sometimes went on entirely too long, and you'll need it to cut that. So, I would also like to take a moment to thank Rachel, who I believe is out of town right now, so probably resting up for all the Mondays she's going to have with you tonight. And also to the Schneider family. Coming from a political family, I know the sacrifices that are made over the years. Wow, Tom, 40 years, it's a long time. And you deserve to go eat ice cream after you take the dairy pill, drink bottled group beer, play golf, travel, and most of all, enjoy your beautiful family and those beautiful grandchildren, knowing that you have served this city well and are leaving it in good hands. All the best to you, my friends.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Mr. Parson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Schneider, I just want to congratulate you on the 40 years of service to the city of Florissant. Makes it even better that you're a fellow CV. I know we have that can-do attitude, even though Mr. Jeff over there kind of hates it a little bit, but I just want to thank you for all your service. 40 years is definitely a long period of time, so I've got a list of a couple things that have happened over the last 40 years, just to remind you how much time that you have put in. First of all, Saddam Hussein was, became the president of Iraq in 40 years and was removed over the last 40 years. The World Wide Web was invented. The trial of the century, O.J. Simpson, occurred. The Y2K scare, remember when everybody thought everything was coming to an end in the year 2000? That occurred over the last 40 years. And lastly, I know a bunch of teenagers are not going to believe this, but the iPhone was invented during this time period. Okay? was invented during this time period, okay? I know it seems like the iPhone has been around forever, but it hasn't. Tom was serving before the iPhone came about. So, again, thank you for your service, and I appreciate the work that you've done here for the City of Florissant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parson. Mr. Shuldrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Tom for his many years of service to the City of Florissant and to North County. I'd also like to thank his wife, Rachel, and Tom's children for lending him to his calling for this period of time. That is quite a sacrifice, both personally and with your family. I remember my first meeting as a councilman for many reasons. At the conclusion of that first meeting, Tom looked at me and gave me what he said was the most important piece of advice he could give a freshman councilman. He looked at the wastebasket behind this dais and said, "Remember to throw everything away in this packet after this meeting." Tom and I collaborated on a few projects, and the majority of them were met with a positive response from the administration. On the rare occasion when there was some pushback, Tom and I conspired together to find a place where the late Mayor Bob Lowery couldn't find us. The late mayor eventually got his man, but not before some good detective work. Remember that? I won't tell her where the place is. Tom made his mark within the city by working with the late state representative Jay Russell to improve our MSD Creek infrastructure. While other cities struggled early on with MSD, Tom worked with this utility company for progress, and it is even more evident today. I've had the pleasure of working with Tom on the creation of our disc golf course, the managing of our eighteen-hole golf course, and the development and passage of Proposition S for street replacement and repair. Former councilman Tim Lee, council president Jeff Caputa, and myself approached Tom with this bail issue, and with his assistance and guidance presented the initiative to the voters, and it passed by a two-to-one margin. Once again, a good infrastructure project for our city, a trademark of Tom's. Tom, I know you will stay busy out of public office. Thank you again for your service and sacrifice.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldrough. Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we've already heard, and you may continue to hear, that the Speaker and Tom didn't always get along. You may hear that there was some screaming matches and certainly disagreements. People who serve in politics are very strong-minded, and verbal discourse is healthy. Wouldn't it be boring if we all felt the same and agreed on everything? Ultimately, we may have a common location where we want to get, but we have different ideas on how to get there. And I hope that when it's my last evening up here, the members of this council say the very same thing about me, that we didn't always get along, but we had common goals in mind. Before Florissant, Tom served as a Navy CB in Vietnam. In an era where it was not unheard of, or in some circles not unpopular, to burn one's draft card and flee to Canada, Tom, like many other young men and women throughout the history of this great country, served under leaders like George Washington, Ulysses Grant, Douglas MacArthur, William Westmoreland, and even in conflicts today, they kissed their families goodbye, never knowing whether they would see them again. They, like Tom, eagerly accepted the challenge to do what's right in protecting our great democracy. Tom, I personally thank you for your service, and I mean it.
Thank you, Joe.
Tom returned home to Florissant and began serving the people of my ward, Ward Three, in 1979. In 1979, the price of gas was eighty-six cents. ESPN was launched, and if you wanted to buy a brand-new Mercury Cougar RX-7, you'd have to shell out sixty-three hundred bucks. And if I bet, if you asked Tom what his phone number was back, then he would have started with Temple Seven or Temple One or something like that. I bring this up not to debase Tom in any way, but to bring a unique perspective to just how long he's served our city. Tom has been with Florissant for over four decades. He has been here during the very, very best of times, and some of those days were very troubled as well. Tom was on the council in 2008, when a recession devastated many communities throughout our country, tough waters. Tough decisions and tough times called for tough leaders and tough decisions, unpopular decisions. One of the decisions was made that the council decided to slash salaries, cut salaries of our employees, our most valuable resources. Tom took the helm of the city in 2011, and under his administration, certain forces have been placed in motion that will impact our community for decades to come. The city was able to restore the employee pay cuts of 2009 and have steadily increased compensation for our employees since then. Under Tom's administration, three measures, like I said, that are critical to our future, were passed. Tom, with the help of Mr. Lee and Mr. Shuldrough and Mr. Caputa, worked hard to pass Proposition S. Prop S will ensure that our street infrastructure will be viable for decades to come. Tom was one of the many torchbearers for Proposition P, which will ensure that our police department is equipped and funded and trained, and will continue to keep us one of the top ten cities in the state of Missouri. Perhaps the most important proposition for Prop A and R, which Tom worked with councilwoman Pagano and Caputa and Mr. Jones to my right, right, or my left. This administration worked with the council to ensure that this and create that these propositions created a partnership between landlords that will ensure that the properties or the rental properties are not only kept up, but everyone's property values are maintained. Walking away from public life will be difficult for any person who's been honored enough to be elected to serve, and I would ask that Tom take one more challenge as mayor emeritus. The City of Florissant is currently experiencing the greatest challenge of our history, the greatest challenge to our very sovereignty. The Better Together proposal would decimate our city and negatively impact every one of us, our rich traditions, our storied past, and our bright future. Our police, our streets, our equipment, our parkings, and even our savings account would be forfeited. I ask Tom to accept the challenge and continue to serve the Florissant by working with local, state, and federal authorities to slay the monster that is before us. Finally, I want to thank Tom for his many years of service. Tom, as everyone in the room knows, is a big history fan, so I wanted to end on a quote. George Washington led his troops across the Delaware on a frozen Christmas in 1776. He was quoted as saying, "Damn, it's cold, can't we do this in June?" No, I take that back. He may have said that, but that's not what he's quoted for. He did say what I am going to follow with, and I hope that Tom accepts my challenge and bears this with him as he does so. Washington said, "The harder the conflict, the greater the triumph," and I hope you take that in going forward. Tom, Kelly and I wish for you and Rachel and your entire family the best, and whatever it is that the good Lord has in store for you next, Godspeed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Tom, we've had our ups and downs. To show that I don't hold grudges, I wish you well on your retirement. It's been a long time coming for you. You put a lot of years into this city, and I think you'll see us prosper and keep moving, Tom, so I think you'll be proud of us the way we end up pushing the city without you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Henke.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thank you for all your years of service. We could spend the rest of the evening for our deserved and sincere praise for the things that you've done for this city, but I'm looking at it from a little different perspective. I hope six months from now that you... I have dinner with you lunch or something, we go out, have a beer or whatever the case may be, and you look at retirement and say, "This is the best job I ever had." That's what I wish for you and Rachel. Enjoy your retirement, sir, you've earned it, every bit of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henke. Yes, Mayor, I've been on the council almost seven years, and it's been a wonderful ride, wouldn't you, buddy? It really has. It's been a good ride, ups and downs, but that's on... that's everything, not just in political, that's in everyday life. We all have our ups and downs, but we got to move on. And we all... we have that same common bond that a lot of people can't say because of the oath that we took twice with you. Going into service, being a veteran, we're losing a veteran on the... as a mayor and a person that sits up here on this dais. It seems like veterans are not around like they used to be, you know? So, we're going to miss you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jackie indicated that she has worked the longest tenure in knowing the mayor as a council member, and I'm a little hesitant to admit this in light of the comments that Mr. Parson and Mr. Egan made about all the time that has passed, but I have the distinction of working with Tom Schneider, the city engineer, starting... you were in seventy-six. I started in seventy-seven as the assistant city attorney. So, I had the distinction of working with you then and working with you as councilmember Schneider as the assistant city attorney, and then for the last thirty-one years as the city attorney for councilmember Schneider and Mayor Schneider. It's been quite a ride, hasn't it? Long time, and it really has been an honor to work with you in all those various capacities, as others have indicated. You and I didn't always agree on everything, but that's expected, but we always agreed that we would work together for this great city, and at the end of the day, we were arm in arm, hand in hand, however you want to characterize it, trying to do the best for this city. I would be remiss if I didn't mention a few of the many awards of leadership that you've received, particularly just in the last few years. You are the, what, 2019 North County Inc. Leadership Award winner? You won the Buzz Westfall Award for Excellence from the St. Louis County Municipal League in, I think it was 2017. I know that you've been recognized by the North County Churches uniting for racial harmony and justice, which is quite an honor and distinction as well. I can't begin to mention the numerous committees and campaigns that you have served on, all for the betterment of Florissant, North County, and the state of Missouri in general. I also witnessed you get a hole-in-one in a golf tournament that we played together in, which was quite a pleasure as well. As Jackie said, I can't do justice as Zack did in commenting and honoring you, but I do want to thank you seriously for your dedication, your service, your commitment to Florissant and watching you as the chief administrative officer for the City of Florissant, for all the employees of the City of Florissant as well. It's been a distinct pleasure and honor to work with you. I'm confident that although you won't be holding the same position, that you and I will be able to enjoy each other's company, whether or not you take the... I assume you will take the challenge that councilmember Egan has posed to you. We can go hand in hand in that as well, and maybe we'll get in a couple rounds of golf as we go through this. So, seriously, Tom, councilmember Schneider, Mayor Schneider, thank you very much for everything you've done. It's been an honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hassel.
Read it the second time.
All in favor? Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council recognizing and thanking Thomas P. Schneider for his eight years of service as mayor of the City of Florissant and his many contributions to North County.
Councilwoman Jones moves for a third reading, second by... Councilwoman Pagano, roll call, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council recognizing and thanking Thomas P. Schneider for his eight years of service as mayor of the City of Florissant and his many contributions to North County.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Yes. Resolution to the Florissant City Council recognizing and thanking Thomas P. Schneider for his eight years of service as mayor of the City of Florissant and his many contributions to North County.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council recognizing and thanking Thomas P. Schneider for his eight years of service as a mayor of the City of Florissant and his many contributions to North County.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council recognizing and thanking Thomas P. Schneider for his eight years of service as a mayor of the City of Florissant and his many contributions to North County.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
No.
Resolution one zero one zero passes. Mayor? From the City Council and the City of Florissant, your proclamation, congratulations for the years of service you have sacrificed for this city. Thank you. It's been an honor to work with you. Thank you. Next items, bills for a first reading. Bill number nine four eight one.
Ordinance authorizing a final subdivision plot of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church, re-subdivision for the property located 360 Graham Road.
Mr. Shuldrough moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing a final subdivision plot of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church, re-subdivision for the property located 360 Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Yes. Ordinance authorizing a final subdivision plot of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church, re-subdivision for the property located 360 Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Resolution to the Florissant City Council recognizing and thanking Thomas P. Schneider for his eight years of service as a mayor of the City of Florissant and his many contributions to North County.
Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final?
No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Resolution authorizing a final subdivision plat of, was that the final? No, of Lot One of Florissant General Baptist Church re-subdivision for the property located three sixty Graham Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?[1312.81]